Fourth, 2023. Happy New Year to everybody. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So as a first order of business, I wanted to acknowledge the reappointment by the Radnor Board of Commissioners at their reorganization meeting yesterday of Commissioner Elaine Vines and also Commissioner Skip Kunda. So first of all, we're thankful for your past service. We're also fortunate to have both of you on for another four years. Please join me in a round of applause for these two gentlemen. Additionally, Commissioner Anna Marie Jones, who's not here with us, she's going to be serving as our liaison for the next year as well. So also, in other news, I also wanted to introduce to the board and to the public our newest member of our team, Mr. Woo Kim. He is the newest member of the Planning Commission. Mr. Kim, I'd like to give you the floor to introduce yourself to the board and to the public.
Thank you, Chairman. Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Woo Kim. I've been a Radnor resident for about 14 years. The word has gotten out that I live on Calvaries, and that is a very notorious street with significant heritage in Radnor Township. I have also been told that I am the only professional planner on this commission, which is, that is my experience. I have about 20 years of experience as a planner. I'm a principal at a firm in Philadelphia, and I'm really happy to join this commission. I think, you know, my background, you know, I have a lot of experience that I could bring to bear. But, I mean, most importantly, I think as an immigrant, you know, that's been naturalized as a citizen, I really think of being an American as more than just nationality. I think it's a responsibility, and this is part of my sort of stage in life where I want to give back to my country, my community that has given me a lot. So, thank you.
Welcome. As an immigrant myself, I can understand the sentiment. Welcome, Commissioner Kim.
Welcome.
All right. So first order of business, since this is the first meeting of the year, is I wanted to get a nomination for the Planning Commission Chair. So can I get a motion from anybody for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. Thank you. Thank you for your vote, and I look forward to the service to Radnor Township in that capacity. Second order of business, I'd like to myself make a motion to nominate Matt Golis as Vice Chair. I don't think Matt needs any introduction. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous as well. All right. Very good. Congratulations, Mr. Golis.
Thank you.
All right. Before we get into the meat and potatoes of the agenda, I would like to solicit public comment for anything that's not on the agenda. So if the public would like to come up, make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda today, you're definitely welcome to speak. Come up to the microphone, state your name, where you live, and kindly limit your commentary to five minutes. I will warn you that we will always have public comment as part of the agenda items. So you're more than welcome to speak at that time when your item comes up. Seeing none. First item is the approval of minutes. This is our last meeting in November. The December meeting was canceled. Any, anything that pop out at you on the minutes from the last meeting, commissioners? All right. The only thing that I saw in the minutes is that the date of our meeting was actually November 7th, not as reflected in the minutes of November 22nd. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our November meeting, subject to changing the date on November 7th? All right.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Great. All right. First item is the application of 1001 Eagle Road. Before we get into it, really struggled with this particular application as it's quite rare for the Planning Commission to look at preliminary final of approval for something that still has so many items outstanding on the review letters. So let's just start with the items and the letters that are not "will comply." I think that's probably the best place for us to start.
Good evening. Rob Lambert here on behalf of the applicant. That's pretty easy. I think everything is "will comply." One of the reasons this is going preliminary final is we've spent the last, I guess it's now 15 months, or actually even a little longer than that, working with the township staff, the community, going back and forth, going through redesigns, and coming up with this product that we have now.
Yeah, and, you know, personally, I wanted to commend the developer for going through that process, and we definitely appreciate you bringing the public in and all the relevant agencies of Radnor Township in to take a look at this project and also provide commentary. So we appreciate that. So you're stating that all of this, all of these review letters, all of the items are going to be "will comply"?
Yes. I'll be happy to go through them bullet by bullet, but everything's "will comply." We are asking for three waivers. One is a pretty standard waiver. It was the features within 500 feet of the site. We are happy to provide any information that's needed for that. A second waiver was to provide an alternate landscape plan. We actually have a completely by right landscape plan. And then we have an alternate plan because of just the features of the site. We have an alternate plan which will provide or establish an understory as the trees age, provide an understory. We're going to put deer protection fence around that. So if the Shade Tree Commission supported that waiver, we're just formally asking for it. And then the other one was just a preliminary final waiver.
Got it. So rather, let me go a little bit out of turn here before we let the commissioners weigh in here. Can I, I'd like to solicit some staff comment on this.
My main concern is regarding the design of the accessway and to make sure that we're going to be meeting some design standards on there regarding vertical curves, horizontal curves, and just wanted to see where you are on that, Rob.
Yeah, so that was, you know, there were some supplemental ones. We have some already. It was just providing some, you know, additional information. We did not see that there's any, you know, again, we didn't have any issues with providing some of those, some of that additional information on the plans, but I don't think it's going to change the design at all.
Mr. Narsini, where do you think we stand on this?
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate Mr. Lambert noting that they're going to comply with everything, and I do also commend the developer for the amount of outreach that they did. That being said, so to ask for preliminary final, you know, the plan should be completely cleaned up and ready to go. And based on the review letters, they're not onerous, but in my opinion, they're not at that point yet to go preliminary final. So if, personal opinion, my recommendation would be, you know, preliminary, once these are all cleaned up, because we still don't have plans. I know Mr. Lambert said "will comply," but we don't have plans that reflect that compliance. Right? So I think it's somewhat of a stretch for preliminary final, maybe not so much for preliminary, assuming all these are addressed and we get a plan that we can review. To that effect? Yeah, review for preliminary approval by the board. And I think Mr. Lambert's at the point that that could be done before the next meeting.
Okay. Got it. Let's have some commissioner comment.
Am I, am I just forgetting that this happened, or have we not had a traffic study walkthrough with this project?
Yes, there was a traffic study submitted.
I know, but we, I don't remember this, I don't remember the planning commission engaging very much with that traffic study. Maybe I'm, I don't think I missed a meeting, but I feel like I didn't have a chance to make question, bring up some questions that I might have with the traffic engineer. Just some, I know it's been, we've been through this like on, at different levels over and over, but did you, was there a traffic presentation? A traffic study presentation? I, I can't remember, but I don't feel like there was.
Mr. Lambert, I seem to recall that you had a traffic study done around October 2021?
Yes. Frank, it wasn't, it was Chris Williams with McMahon Associates had prepared it. I believe he, I'm not sure if he's in front of this body. He's been in front of the zoning hearing board. That will be submitted to PennDOT. It was submitted to PennDOT. PennDOT's approved that traffic study. We're now in the process of the HOP with PennDOT for the driveway access.
Right. So, but I don't think this board had a chance to actually talk to Chris, right?
I don't believe so, no.
See, I, I feel like we should have that opportunity. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I'm not trying to put a bullet in this, but I'm just saying that, like I have, the traffic study was done over, it was done more than one time, based on the packet. So in 2022, there's another, there was another traffic study where some of the counts changed.
There was supplemental information, yes.
Yeah, and so.
The unit, the unit mix had changed, which changed the IDT, ITE traffic counts is what occurred.
But what, so I just had a few, I had a few questions about methodology, that's all. Like in terms of, one of the, one of the headlines in the traffic study is that the traffic volume with, this, this project won't change the traffic counts or the traffic volume or the traffic issue as it exists now with 20 cottages and some activity from Valley Forge. But, you know, when you look at the number of, of, the number of rooms and the occupancy of the project versus what exists now, I just wanted to know how they came to that conclusion that.
So, so traffic studies are very interesting studies. They, they review the peak traffic. This use is not a peak traffic generator. And so when you look at the peak times, this is very little traffic during those times. The staffing usually comes in, you know, before or after those peak times, and the residents aren't going out to go to work in the morning. And so you're not hitting the peak hour. And when you do that, it doesn't impact, from a traffic study standpoint, it's not impacting that, those times.
You know, and my problem is that I, you know, and I hate, I hate to keep bringing this up, but my parents lived in a very similar place in San Antonio, and they had about the same numbers that you guys have, and they had two entrances. One was signaled and one was a stop. And the folks in the, who would live there always used the signaled exit because they were in their 80s and 70s, and they, they just trusted the light more than, so that, so we, when we visited, we always used the stop exit and entrance. But in this case, we don't have those two things. So it's like, I'm just thinking, how old do people drive? Like, I just wanted, it just seemed to me that there was going to be some more traffic. But I, you know, and I just wanted, I just wanted an explanation of why, you know, why we're getting some zero on it, you know?
Mr. Drummond, could you weigh in on the traffic issue? Are we entitled to another review of?
Sure. We did look at the traffic study. We found that traffic study, there was going to be additional traffic to the roadway network. There's approximately 800-plus ADT traffic for the drive, the new driveway. But even with the driveway, we looked at the peak hours, and the peak hours did operate acceptably at the driveways. The one issue we had at the driveway was possibly site distance, which we are still looking at, and we're going to look at with PennDOT. But we believe that the site distance will be acceptable at the driveway. So with that, we thought the traffic was acceptable per the township standards.
Yeah, and, you know, to be fair, the two Gilmore comments on traffic is related to site distance, and mostly they're vegetation-related, right? Without prolonging this, I just want to get a temperature check of the board, without taking a vote on whether we should table this matter and not even consider for preliminary. But if we do consider for preliminary approval, it would obviously take a little bit longer. But what are your thoughts, board, as to maybe tabling this and allowing the applicant to come back for preliminary or final approval once the plans are cleaned up?
I would be in favor of that, cleaning up the plans before we judge.
Thank you.
I would be in favor of that as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Vines. Anybody else? Anybody against?
If the applicant really wants to move with preliminary, I'm all right with moving.
Sorry. I'm okay with moving on a preliminary basis, based on this, because we've had this for a while. We're all, I think, pretty familiar with this. But I, I think if they really want preliminary final, then I think, given the, the staff's comments, that it's kind of a no-brainer that they come back.
Can I interject to you for just a second? Looking at the review letters, you know, the Gilmore letter is asking for a couple profiles and slopes, right? And really, that's a very nominal thing. If we resubmit the plan set, I know when very few people are going to realize that anything has changed. On the Gannett letter, there's some things talking about, you know, driveway dimensions. There's several points are really just comments that aren't going to change, right? So I would say their first, their subdivision comments are going to remain the same. The sewage comment is going to remain the same. The zoning comments are really going to remain the same, except to say that they received the zoning determination. The stormwater comment is, again, they're really going to remain the same, right? We're going to resubmit, and we're going to be back into the same spot, where we're going to have, you know, several comments that are going to be worked out during final plan, right? Providing an easement around where the sewer is, some details there. The sanitary sewer comments, these are kind of new comments. It's talking about locations of grease traps for, for several comments. They're likely going to remain the same, right? We do not have a full plumbing diagram of the building to know exactly where that grease trap is going to be coming out of that, that building. And really, that's going to be in a much further architectural design. Then there's two general comments at the end, which were new deeds being prepared and recorded, and a recommendation of the Shade Tree Commission, which we have. So we can go through the process of revising and resubmitting. My guess is the letters are going to be very similar to what you're seeing today. We might be able to drop a handful of comments off of them, but a lot of the comments in the Gannett letter are informational comments, saying that we've provided a 60-foot right-of-way or offer dedication on Eagle Road, where the code says that we should offer 80 feet, right? We've offered 60 feet because we're trying to save the gatehouse, right? That's the reason we're doing it. If everybody says we need 80, we can give 80 and go around the house or have it go through the house. However, anybody wants to do that. I'm just looking at the comments real quickly.
Mr. Lambert, if I could interject. So, and I'm only going to speak for me, not the Planning Commission. So the goal between preliminary approval and final approval would be just some outside agency approvals and some cleanup. And so the applicant has had a chance to address these issues. Hasn't happened. We don't have those plans. I think there will be some more sanitary sewer comments. Nothing major, some changes of slopes and things like that. But all the items you noted as comments, and this is just a suggestion, perhaps you revise the plans to all our consultants requirement, all their comments, provide the letter back that notes, you know, yes, that, that comment is, we're supposed to give 80, we're giving you 60. Come back to the Planning Commission so everything is clear, and hopefully get your preliminary approval, and then it's a rather quick step for final approval.
So I'm asking, I guess I'm asking it differently, is if we could have that preliminary now, you know, that we wouldn't be asking for that preliminary final. If, if the case is the outside agency things, as we've discussed in the past, the outside agencies are going to take time. We acknowledge that. We were given feedback early on in the process that those could be conditions of final approval and not necessarily have to go back in front of the board for those outside agency approvals.
That, that's, that's correct. That final plan approval, there can be conditions for outside agency approvals. But for the Planning Commission's benefit, it's my understanding that in addition to the zoning hearing board adjudication that's in your packet, the applicant's recently appeared before the zoning hearing board to get relief from parking requirements. The zoning hearing board, I believe verbally, agreed to the relief requested. Is that correct?
We actually had the decision. It was issued the end of December.
One of the, the things that I would recommend from a legal standpoint is that you may choose to wait until an appeal period expires before granting preliminary, preliminary plan approval. An applicant's entitled to preliminary plan approval in accordance with the terms of, or final plan approval in accordance with the terms of preliminary plan approval. And if there would be an appeal to that zoning hearing board decision, which, it would greatly affect the layout of the plan.
Mr. Lambert, what's the date of that decision?
I believe it was December 22nd.
Okay. Solicitor, what is the appeal period?
30 days.
30 days.
And do you have to be a party to appeal?
Yes, and the township can appeal as well.
Right. So I believe the township was the only party. There were no parties, people of party status.
That is an important factor.
Okay. Got it. So I'm going to make a motion that we table this pending, pending final plans. We, we would like to, you know, it's my opinion that we'd like to see this cleaned up, both the Gilmore and the Fleming letters cleaned up, get plans of everything that's contemplated in those letters, and obviously weigh it out, the appeal process. And having said that, before.
Mr. Chairman, there's also a sidewalk issue that Damon thinks we should be aware of before you close this out or vote on the motion.
Is this, that, is this 255-37?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah. This is, I believe the applicant also indicated that this will be provided later. We'd like to see that on the plans, obviously.
So, yeah, so this is.
The sidewalk and pedestrian paths?
Right. So we have pedestrian paths. I don't believe it's a sidewalk. We have a driveway, right? We have a parking facility that, that we're accessing. Our parking facility just happens to be 800 feet from the access road. What Damon has asked about was providing a sidewalk along that access driveway. We've provided that sidewalk. He suggested that we need a verge, and it's not required. He's recommending it. We're happy to provide it where we can. There are going to be areas where that sidewalk is adjacent to the driveway itself just because of existing features and steep slopes or what may be there. So, you know, this is a, you know, again, it's a recommendation, not a requirement in this instance.
Sure, and it looks like you're going along with it.
Yeah, and everywhere we can provide it, we, you know, we can provide the five-foot verge. That's not an issue.
Sure. I do want to commend the applicant for not only complying with the requirements, but also complying with the recommendations of everybody involved. I would like to give you an opportunity to provide plans for preliminary final approval.
Right. I just, the reason I brought up the, the comments here is, again, we're going to resubmit these plans. We are still going to have comments, right? There will still be a litany of, of comments here asking, asking questions. So I don't want everybody to expect that, you know, we're going to get two letters that say, you know, no issues, right? There's going to be comments on, on the letters when we resubmit.
This isn't our first rodeo. We get that. Thank you. Should we take a vote?
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
Rob, if you're coming back to us, is it possible to bring the traffic engineer?
We can bring Chris next time.
Because I really have some behavioral questions to ask, which may or may not make sense. But just because this facility is so unique, especially for Radnor, I want to make sure that there's, like, people have thought through having a bunch of older seniors driving, and there's just some things I just want to, I want to hear the traffic engineer respond to.
Yep. Now, if we're coming back, there's no problem.
Solicitor, do we take a vote on tabling something, or?
You sure can.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. I'm going to make a motion to table the application for Eagle Road land development. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Brub, Commissioner Brubaker opposed, and Mr. Baronhorst. So motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lambert.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is zoning hearing board appeal number 3150, Villanova University.
Evening. Nick Canelia for the university. I came in, I mentioned to Mary that I got a call this evening from Villanova. They're looking at some other alternatives as to location, and they would wish that this matter, I guess, either be tabled or continued. We understand we would not be able to proceed to the zoning hearing board this month. If it is continued or tabled, we would, if we do go to the zoning hearing board, we'd be back before you in February.
Mr. Canelia, what are you asking for, tabling or continuing? It's your choice.
I, tabling, I guess, would be the, the appropriate method. I don't know if it really makes a difference. I think tabling is probably the, the appropriate term for it in this, in this instance.
Solicitor, is there a distinction?
Maybe we'll have the minutes reflect that is table slash continued. How's that?
Is there a distinction here? No. Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to table zoning hearing board appeal 3150, Villanova University?
So moved.
All right. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Zoning hearing board appeal number 3151-317 Ivan Avenue.
Happy New Year, everyone. My name's Julie Bernstein, and we met a couple months ago.
Welcome back.
So I'm the attorney for the applicant. Let's see. I am not seeing it on here. I might need some tech assistance. I wonder if I can just lay this out for you guys. Sorry, guys. I wanted you to be able to see the new updated. You're here. I, I don't. Sorry. I thought you guys had it. I emailed it as well this morning. You said you emailed it this morning? I did. I did. That is.
Is that you, Beck?
Yeah. Just scroll down, it's somewhere down there.
Tell me why.
I keep going, sorry. It's after the deed, which of course is a bunch of pages. Yeah, that's fine, start, and then I can just scroll to show them. Thank you so much. Okay, I'll give you a verbal overview to entertain you, I guess. So as you may recall, this is a proposed subdivision of the neighboring property 317 Ivan Street. It's a minor subdivision. We're actually back here in response to sort of comments from you guys and the engineer. It was noticed that there were some comments about sloping that was man-made. So here we go, let's see. So as you can see, the property is, again, it's the neighboring property, it is currently improved with a single-family dwelling. That does have some that we determined after the last hearing, some man-made steep slopes. They were built up kind of here in the front and they lead up until the the entryway of this single-family dwelling. They were clearly kind of built there to prop up the sidewalk and the landing on the way in to this property. There also, we noticed, were some, a couple also man-made steep slopes that would have been created when Ivan and kind of the associated improvements were put in in the right-of-way. So we are here because the demolition of this home in order to subdivide and improve the property would necessarily demolish the man-made steep slopes. They're kind of part and parcel of the home itself versus naturally occurring and part of the property. And then also, as I'll show you when I move to the next plan, at the last meeting, it was discussed that there was a lot of interest in adding a sidewalk along the frontage of the property and curbs. And so we have redesigned the plan to add a sidewalk in the right-of-way and curbs since that seemed to be something that everyone was interested to kind of move forward on this street and that would necessarily disturb this little area of steep slopes. So since the last meeting, we've submitted an application to the zoning hearing board for relief that would allow us to disturb both man-made steams, steep slopes for this proposal. So again, if we, if I scroll down, can I get you? Nope, this isn't, well, it's got you to the title plan. Might be above, oh, here's the title plan. So as mentioned last time, apart from the steep slope issue, these two lots subdivided would fully comply with all other zoning provisions contained within the code, all of the setbacks, impervious, yada, yada. So it is a compliant plan, other than the fact that these slopes right here, as soon as the home is taken down, would be removed. The home is currently in pretty poor condition, so in order to improve this property in any capacity, they would end up being disturbed. And then again, these are only kind of being disturbed because we're adding a sidewalk here, which seemed to be something that the township was really interested in, given the neighborhood and that it's next door to here, in the hopes that maybe neighboring properties would also start adding a sidewalk. So again, we've submitted an application to the zoning hearing board. Again, you're gonna see down here kind of the existence of where these slopes, the slopes would now be gone, so these would be the two homes, this is their better footprint, so it shows the actual side yard setbacks and backyard setbacks that comply. And the improvements are generally gonna greatly improve the property. The home that they're, that's there really is in quite poor condition and this is gonna revitalize it, make the property safer. It's a, going to be a huge improvement with stormwater, the sidewalks, and they've also received shade tree commissions, so there's gonna be a significant new landscaping plan for each lot. So we're here tonight solely to ask for your recommendation that we obtain this relief so that we can kind of move forward with this project from the zoning hearing board.
So first of all, I wanted to commend the staff for identifying that this is, was a potential issue and obviously the applicant for providing a different approach. Obviously, you are gonna need zoning hearing board relief, that's what we're here to hear. Ms. Bernstein, you're making the distinction in your application between man-made and naturally occurring steep slopes. Can you tell us why you're making that distinction?
So the code itself, actually the language that's there, the purpose of the provisions are to preserve naturally occurring landscaping when, you know, to the extent that grading would be provided, it's to go with the grading that would naturally be there in the land. So the slopes that lead up to the front of this home, again, aren't naturally occurring, they kind of dumped soil to build it up, to raise up and prop up the front of that home, but they don't have any kind of relationship to the the property around them. So this particular code doesn't specify, but many codes in other townships do clearly specify that man-made steep slopes don't count as steep slopes, that, because the idea is about this preservation of the natural features and the concerns that come along with removing or disturbing steep slopes are different when it's, you know, someone building up a little hill and then removing that hill that's there to improve the property. And again, that's, that's the case here, we found, I didn't bring them all with you to bore everyone, but there are kind of historic documentation that indicates that man-made's, that these were man-made steep slopes from the permitting of when that original house was built up. The other reason is this home, the single dwelling that's there, was built before the provisions of the code for steep slopes, and there is actually currently an exception. So if a newer home was built that built up man-made steep slopes, there would be an exception for that in the code, it just doesn't apply here because this is an older home that predates those particular provisions. So that's why we're going to the board. We are asking for a variance because that is the determination of the officer, but we did ask in the alternative for, you know, interpretation of the code to state that it doesn't actually apply to steep slopes based upon the purposes of the provision. The whole section kind of, it's to protect watersheds, to prevent landsides and soil subsidence, to maintain adequate foliage cover on hillsides. So here, you know, we're kind of removing something that's there, we're doing significant stormwater improvements on the property to, you know, limit or mediate, I mean, it will improve the property from the way that it is in its current state in terms of stormwater. And then with the landscaping, it will more naturally kind of fit in with the neighborhood and buffer out the other properties, the neighbor right next door to this one that isn't this municipality building is a home that is a newer home and is quite nice-looking and hopefully these two homes will kind of fit in line with, you know, improvements of the neighborhood.
Ms. Bernstein, I'm gonna ask a logical question, how do we know these are man-made?
So again, there, you can see that the the sloping when they put in the permits was flat and then afterwards it wasn't. Oh, Scott, you made it. I, we didn't put into this the the initial historic, we have it for the zoning hearing board, but we, we went to the town, or I didn't, you did, right? It was you who picked up all of the historic plans? That did indicate that, you know, when they were putting in the plan to initially subdivide in this area and then build, you can see the grading in the area and then the grading afterwards. You can see it wasn't there before. It also, when you look at the home, let's see, if I have any photos here.
So you don't actually have those documents here tonight, right?
I don't.
We have, we have them for the zoning application, but yes, they all came from the township. So the house was built, I'd be approximately 52, something like that, and a year or two later is when the garage addition was put on. So what, what she's referring to is here is like right, this is the, this is the location of the current house. You can see where the walkway is.
Mm-hmm.
The garage addition was right here and the grading was created for the house, the garage, and the walkway, and then eventually sloped down into the, into the yard. What, one of the other things we were looking at is when the subdivision occurred, prior to the house being built, there was like some existing slopes that were prepared by the engineer at the time. Everything has a general grade toward the street. There was nothing in this vicinity.
Excuse me, would you like a handhold for for our listening audience?
Sure.
And just identify yourself if you don't mind.
I'm Scott Emerson with Bentley Homes, here. So what, what I was referring to is, so with the research that we did on the house itself, the slope was created initially from the home construction. The property had a general slope towards the street, so we're going from high side to low side, grades down. That was consistent prior to the subdivision as it was going on, existing conditions. The house was constructed, a year, two years later, the garage addition was constructed along with the walkway. And so when you look at the house, you can actually see it if you're driving past in the neighborhood, just because it's right next to the township building, you can see how the hill was created to kind of give it a more casual, easier walkway up to the house itself.
Okay, got it. And what is, I suppose your plan will include regrading that, the removal of that steep slope. Can you tell us, quantify the, I guess, how much of that you're removing? Cubic feet, square feet?
Well, if the house was just to be demolished, which we have the permit to do, those slopes would go away just to bring it back to natural grade. So this area right here, square feet, and I think we had it measured out, there was only about, I mean, 700 square feet, something like that. That wouldn't exist if the house was torn down.
Got it, thank you. Commissioner, comment?
I have one question. You're now looking at putting in a curb?
So, so we did add at the edge, there's both a sidewalk and a curb, those were just, were two of the items that were discussed. The third item that we had asked a waiver for at the last meeting had been about the widening of the street and it cannot continue to widen based upon, so this area wasn't widened because there was concern about safety in just widening this one little section and nowhere else, but because there was such an interest in this, the sidewalks and we just added a curb because I don't think that was discussed as much, but...
Yeah, I don't remember the curb, I remember the sidewalk, I remember the issue of widening, but if you put a curb, and I'm, this is just a question, if you put a curb in on the one side, is that going to change like the runoff from the street?
No, because there's an existing inlet that goes into the street, which we're tying, which we're tying into.
At the top of the property.
So there's, there's existing piping. There's an existing pipe that was installed during the subdivision, again, back in the 50s, which connects into an inlet into Ivan Avenue.
Right, but I'm just thinking, doesn't the street kind of go down, so that's at the top of the property and then as it goes to the the lower side of the property, where is that water gonna go?
So all the water will be directed, so we have two stormwater seepage beds, so that will be holding off the new impervious that we're putting in. The off-site component of the stormwater will continue the same, we're rerouting it just for efficiency and still connecting to the existing piping that's in Ivan. So as far as that's concerned, we're, it's essentially staying the same.
You'll be back to see us on that, provided you get zoning hearing board relief, right?
We would.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a couple questions. Couple questions. The stream that the bridge covers goes through your property or next to it?
It is off our property.
Okay, now, in big storms, that road's closed. Does that water get up into your property in a big storm like we've had in, you know, the past five years?
Not that we're aware of.
Okay. Will the grading affect how the stream functions?
No, as, as I mentioned, we're putting in two new stormwater management systems. So the stormwater that would leave the site, we're actually retaining that and it's released at a slower rate, so it won't be adding to that load, if you want to call it a load, during a storm. So we're actually going to make, be making the condition better as much as we can with this parcel.
So you're gonna, you're gonna capture all the stormwater?
Yes.
My other question is, if, does building two structures on this property, is that why the the steep slopes is an issue for you guys? Or would, if you were just building one house, would you still have the steep slope issue?
We'd still have the steep slopes just because it's dead center of the lot, right in front of the existing house.
So my, my take on this, fellow commissioners, is that the applicant is dealing with a technicality because of timing of when the house was built and when Radnor created some ordinance changes. That's just my opinion, but that's what I think's going on. Steve, does that, you argue with that, or?
No, sir, I would not argue with that.
Any other commissioner comment? All right, let's...
One, one quick question. Ms. Bernstein, you mentioned the dilapidated condition of the existing structure. Is it currently or has it been recently inhabited or has it been vacant for a period of time?
Do you know how long it's been vacant? We had purchased the property several months ago. As far as I know, the owners were still living there. So I'm gonna say as of, you know, probably like five months ago, there's people living in the property.
Okay, so not dilapidated to the point of?
Not because of neglect, it's been that way. The condition is because of how the owners were there prior to us.
Yeah, there a commissioner comment?
Republican.
We'll get there. Staff, I assume you have no further comment on this?
We don't have any further comments and our new, our recommendation is neutral.
Okay, got it. All right, let's hear from the public. I'll take the handhold back if you don't mind. Thank you. Is there any public comment? So come up, state your name. All right, hearing none.
Moved to approve the variance request. Second, moved to recommend.
So the motion, I assume you wanted to recommend to the zoning hearing board?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly what our goal was here, but yes, recommend approval.
Okay, and second by Commissioner Kunda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. All right, unanimous, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck at zoning, thank you. Okay. Zoning hearing board for 150 to 168 Lancaster Ave.
We were here previously, we continually came back with revised plans and we will be proceeding hopefully to the zoning hearing board this month and we'd like to present to you the revised plans and receive your comments and hopefully your recommendation. your comments and hopefully your recommendation. Dan Berger, start.
Great, thank you. So great to see you again, thanks for your time. My name's Dan Berger, CEO Berger Communities. We're the developer of this project and personally live in, resident of Radnor Township for, for basically my whole life here. We were here, obviously, a few months ago, presented our initial plan and heard comments from the board, as well as residents, and we're, we're here to present a revised plan here. Big picture, we scaled the project back slightly here to address some of the concerns. We, as well, we've increased the setback on Luella, which was another concern that we heard. Parking, which was something that came up several times. We redesigned the building and the site, so we could retain the existing parking spots on both Lancaster Avenue and Luella. That was a major point that we had discussed a few months ago, the, the parking, on-street parking spots on Luella. So we're presenting a plan with showing eight spots on Luella. And, and lastly, we redesigned and the site, and as a result, we widened the ingress and egress off of Luella. That was a, a major point that was addressed, especially by the neighbors in our, behind us, about how we can increase the, the width of that ingress and egress. So with that, we're gonna call Matt Johnson, our Director of Development, who's gonna go into some more details here.
Sure.
So before we get into it, I just want to acknowledge the applicant for actually coming in for an informal review. This is our sketch plan process that we like applicants to follow in developments such as this. So you guys came in front of us on October 3rd, thanks for listening to us. It's always really helpful to have the applicant come in, because we're able to informally discuss the plan, make recommendations, and for the listening audience, sketch plan review is a process through which anybody that's contemplating a major development saves a lot of time and money before coming in for, for a formal review. So through that process, we can actually take the applicant, talk to them about any issues that may come up, and guide the applicant informally. So thank you for doing that. That being said, please continue.
Okay. So much of the building remains the same, right? It's a three-story building over one level of basement parking. What we're looking at right now is the second and third floor plan, so it's the apartment plan. We kept the same number of apartments, but we decreased the number of two-bedroom units, which decreases the required parking. So we went from sixteen ones and eight two-bedrooms to twenty ones and four two-bedrooms, which decreased our parking need by about four. This is our ground level plan. Again, we decreased the amount of retail, which then decreases the number of loading zones that are required. So now, because of the amount of retail, we're only required one loading zone, which we're able to provide. Previously, we needed two loading zones, which we were having a difficult time providing. This is also the plan, which would be at-grade on Lancaster. So you can see, we're keeping the same number of spaces out on Lancaster, it's still the ten spaces. But if you recall, they're getting sort of pushed out to align with the rest of the spaces on Lancaster. Currently, they're, they're recessed about eight to ten feet from where we have them. You'll see, we also, as Dan mentioned, we're keeping eight spaces on Luella. Again, these are essentially relocated. They're being pushed out in, more into the right-of-way, as opposed to recessed more onto our site. But again, it's the same number of spaces that were there previously. So previously, we had eighteen street public parking spaces. We're retaining eighteen street public parking spaces along the perimeter of our property. And you can see, this is our residential entrance up in the corner here off Lancaster that gets you access to the elevator to go up. Moving down to the basement level, you can take a look at our, our parking level, which shows we have twenty-eight parking spaces in the garage. This twenty-eight number meets the zoning requirement for the apartments. So it provides one for every one-bedroom apartment, it provides two for every apartment over eight hundred square feet, so that gets you to the number twenty-eight. The remaining parking for the retail and for guests is assumed to be out on the street, as is the case today. Other things Dan mentioned, you can see we've widened the ingress and egress here to get into the garage, and then we have our, our loading zone called out here. We've also added an interior trash room next to the loading zone. Obviously, it's convenient to have the trash next to the loading zone for pickup. And we added these steps at the rear for rear-loading, which would go up to the retail, yeah, up to the retail. If, for any deliveries that can't be carried up the steps, we do plan to regrade Luella to eliminate the steps that are currently existing at the corner of Lancaster and Luella. So the parking would still be, or the loading zone would still be to the rear of the building, and that would have to be hand-trucked up and around. But currently, you can't really do that, given the steps and the sidewalk, so we think we're making the condition a little bit better. One of the other comments, it was just red brick, red brick versus tan brick, right? We're very early in this process, we're, we're open to it, so we're showing a red brick building here. Again, we can show the same thing in tan, but the, the intention is to have high-quality brick building. We would ask our architect to pull in some details that would kind of accentuate or be pulled from like existing structures, like in, in Radnor, whether it's something from the theater or, or some accent features that... Some more views. These, these have not been updated to show the parking on Luella, so the building is still kind of pushed out to the property line in, in the renderings. That's the other thing I should note, the, previously, our building came all the way out to the property line. The setback that's required on Luella is forty-five feet from the center line of Luella. Previously, we were showing a thirty-foot setback. Currently, we're showing a forty-foot setback, so we moved the building back ten feet. But again, the requirement's forty-five. The existing building is fifty feet off the center line.
By the way, you're demonstrating, I, I know you're not bound by this, but there's a Cafe Luella that's restaurant use? I assume you're, you're just going for retail?
Yeah, we're asking for retail. Our architect put signs on the building.
Okay, got it.
This is a quick synopsis of, of what we're asking for, right? We need, at this point, we need relief in three areas. It's the buffer strip to the rear of the building. There's a requirement for a ten-foot green buffer between another residential building. Currently, that alley serves as access to 102 Luella and also our neighbor on Lancaster, that 148 Lancaster, you can access from that alley. So, so we, like, that, that buffer isn't existing, we don't intend to install it. Again, the building setback line along Luella, forty-five feet is a requirement, the existing is fifty, we're proposing forty. The building, the increased building footprint, like, allows us to add more parking on-site. It allows for a pretty efficient parking layout on-site to get the multiple bays in We also intend, as I mentioned, we intend to regrade the sidewalk along Luella to eliminate the steps that are on Luella. So once we do that regrading, it would kind of bury the basement level where there is existing retail there now. So increasing our footprint, moving our setback line out a little bit, allows us to retain not as much retail as is there today, but allows us to get closer to the same amount of retail that exists today, which we would be losing access to once we regrade the site and eliminate those steps. And then, lastly, off-street parking. Go into the calc. So I have, I have handouts of this, if anyone would like a hard copy to take a look, take notes, but the current building has nine apartments. It has about seven thousand square feet, that get counted into the parking count. It also has the smoothie store, which, that's calculated differently. And then the, the guest parking with the nine units, that would require three. So the total parking required in the existing building is forty-four spaces. There's no parking provided on-site, all of the parking is provided out on the street in, in part of the right-of-way currently. So the current non-conformity is, is those forty-four spaces. Our proposed building has twenty-four units, it has eight thousand square feet, which kind of, of retail, which, which counts towards the parking count. So that requires a fifty-five, plus the guest parking of six, brings us up to sixty-one spaces that are required, and we're providing twenty-eight on-site. So our non-conformity that we're proposing is thirty-three spaces. So we think we're making the parking situation better by those eleven spaces. Some photos of the existing. Lastly, coincidentally, we were talking to one of our consultants on another project who lives in the township. He brought up the fact that we were looking at this project, and he was like, what are you gonna do about those steps? Right, because apparently, he lives to the south of our project, somewhere off Luella, and he says when he comes to town with his family and their, and their stroller, he needs to cross the street to go to the church side, because he needs to avoid those steps. Then he goes up to the intersection, crosses the street again, and crosses Luella again, and then crosses over Lancaster. So we really feel like, I mean, the steps, it's a, it's a loading thing, it's an ADA thing, it's a family with stroller thing, right?
My recollection is that those eight spots on the Luella side are leased to the township so they can...
That's correct.
That's gonna continue? Did you ever find the lease?
We, we do have the lease, and that would continue. Now, they're kind of pushed more out into the right-of-way, so I'm not sure if a lease would be required, but the intent would be that those would be metered spaces by the
Just a couple of questions before we turn it over to the rest of the commissioners. Have you, and I know that this isn't what you're asking for, but my concern is that if we recommend for approval and you gain approval at zoning, we're creating a saldo issue with respect to parking. Before we get into that, the, the parking spaces, what are the dimensions that you're proposing of the parking spaces?
I, I honestly don't know what's shown on the plan right now, let me see. We don't have it dimensioned.
I think the requirement is nine and a half by twenty.
Okay, I mean, if we're gonna provide, well, so are you talking out on the street?
No, no, inside parking for the residents.
So if we're gonna provide something that's smaller than the requirement, we would need an additional variance or something, so at this point, we're not asking for that.
Right, and, you know, that's my concern, is that if we recommend approval, you gain approval, then are we just creating an issue down the road where you're gonna have to ask for a variance on that as well? What's the width of the entrance to the parking structure, to the garage itself? And is it one-way or two-way? I suppose it's two-way, right?
Yeah, it's, it's two-way, at least twenty-four feet.
Okay.
Which is what I can tell.
I believe the, the requirement's twenty-five, just for the record.
Okay.
And last but not least, same, same chapter, saldo, 255 dash twenty-nine twenty, one parking space per four is for overflow?
Sure.
That'll, you know, if this is approved, you'll have to ask for, for a variance on that as well. Say that again, waiver?
It'd be a waiver.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and just on that, if you looked at the code, it says that those spaces can be provided in a public parking facility, so I think to some extent, what we're doing here does meet the spirit and intent of the ordinance. But again, that would be a decision for you, whether to grant the waiver on that or not. We would have to ask for relief, although our position would be, really does qualify as to the spirit and intent of the ordinance regarding that, because it is being provided in public parking.
Sure. I don't want to dive too deep into the opinion of this project, obviously. Nice job. WBOD is an interesting area where transit-oriented development, retail-oriented development on the ground floor is encouraged, and obviously residential is encouraged on floor two and Commissioners, like to hear from you guys, comment-wise?
One more comment. We did look at the parking standards for the WBOD, and under 255 eighty, I believe it says yes, off-parking spaces shall be nine feet by eighteen feet, off-street parking. That's 255 eighty, B1.
Okay.
So I believe that's what we're providing in the garage. Rob's nodding his head, yes.
Got it, thank you.
I, I noticed on your plan that's up there, the shaded gray area, is that gray for some particular reason? Is that what you're gonna maintain? Is that...
We would need to have a discussion with the condo association to the south. It would be our intent to maintain the entirety of the alley, not just the, the shaded gray area. The shaded gray is just meant to represent the ingress, egress, and then the loading zone, so...
Okay. I know it's a concern, and somebody has to take it on, and I think the highest, you know, volume of use will be the new tenants for that alley.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it would be our preference to maintain it, so...
Make that a condition of approval?
Sure.
Of course, we're not doing that part, we're doing the zoning part.
If we get that far, we can make it a condition.
So if you, if you were gonna make this project conforming for parking, what would it leave you with?
Let me, let me take a look at the chart.
Aren't they shy thirty-three spaces?
No, I, I just wanna, I'm trying to, I wanna make a point here, but I want...
So, our retail, that eight thousand square feet requires twenty-seven spaces. We're able to provide twenty-eight in that efficient garage that we're showing, right? So we'd be able to do an underground garage and, and one level of retail.
And no, no...
No apartments.
No apartments.
Yeah.
And the reason I'm asking, let me, can I just finish?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt, yeah. I was just gonna...
The reason I'm asking this, and because actually, Nick, I, I need to ask you a question concerning this. How many other folks along that strip from what, from North Wayne to Luella are non-conforming?
Probably pretty much all of them. There are some back, you can see on School Lane there, that do have some parking in the rear, but they're certainly non-conforming. No, no building in the WBOD, maybe outside of the State Store now, has conforming parking, as far as I reme... Just thinking off the top of my head, that's, the State Store's the only one I can think that has any off-street parking.
And the reason, the reason I ask that is because the rules are rules, right? But then you think, what do we really need in Wayne? We really need this project, in my opinion, because it offers things that we don't have, and we're losing businesses because of parking issues. You're, you're bringing down, your, your, your conformity is getting better than it, than the, the present situation. So I mean, I, you know, I, look, some people on this commission are gonna say, a rule is a rule, it can't be broken, it can't, we don't want to hear about variances and waivers. But in this case, we, we're gonna lose this project if you guys can't get this waiver.
That's, yeah, that's what we feel. To me, feels a good project for Wayne, and Matt, as you know, you know, I'm a township resident, I just think it's important for Wayne to be restored and to be built up again. We have a lot of vacant storefronts right now, so...
Mr. Caneley, could, um, we go over the parking again. So for ninety-degree parking, it's twenty, twenty-two, twenty, right? Twenty in length for the space, twenty-two width for the aisle, and then twenty, again, for the next spot. Am I, so Mr. Lambert, am I, what are we depicting? Not saying anything good or bad, just what are we depicting?
Yeah, on eighty gra... I'll turn it over to... Yeah, on 80, I'll turn to Rob's here, too. But on 80B1 and 2, is that what you're looking at, Steve?
Yeah, that table where it shows, you know, 90-degree spaces, 60-degree spaces.
Oh, that, okay. Yeah, we're looking at under the W, again, under the article nine of the saldo regarding the W B O D, then 2580B deals with parking in the W B O D. Now, again, on the aisle width and things of that nature, I'll let Rob answer that.
Correct. So so the W B O D has a different parking space size. I I believe it was 24 feet that was what they had for the aisle. You know, I can double check that, but I believe it was 24 feet.
2580B. I'm just following up on Mr. Fruman's question.
I I think the distinction here, Mr. Norcini, is is there a distinction between underground parking and off-street parking? Or are those two in the same?
There, we're looking at that now. Give us a minute, but there's regulations for parking areas that have more than three spaces and regulations for general parking. And we're trying to figure out which of those apply.
Sounds good. Mr. Kim, Commissioner Kim.
So I I agree with my fellow commissioner that I think this is something that we really need in Wayne. However, I do have some questions, some technical questions. One is you mentioned the that you will sort of eliminate the steps and regrade that so that it's handicap accessible. Are you sure that that's possible?
I shouldn't say handicap accessible. I'm not sure we'll be able to meet the exact percentages, but it will be more accessible than the current steps.
Okay. But when you do that, you're you're sort of giving the impression that this is a public right-of-way, that the public is able to use it, correct? So you you have to, if it's not accessible, if it's not by accessibility standards, then you'll have to put some sign or some notice up there that says that, you know, this is a steep slope and you got to be careful.
I believe the penalty regulation is as long as we're following, where it's not feasible, as long as we're following the grade of the road, it's permitted to follow the grade of the road. And so in this instance, we'd be following the grade of Luella Avenue up, so that would be permissible, is my understanding.
Okay. I'm assuming that the steps are created for a reason because it was just very challenging to.
Matt, if you could go back to the picture, you can see that they were putting in a lower level is really what they were doing.
Okay.
So right now, it it actually slopes down from Luella to the building to create that lower level, and that's why they required the steps.
I see. Okay. The other question I have is regarding your garage. What what is the the threshold into the garage? Is it secured? Is it, how are you handling that?
It would be secured.
So.
The the intent is that it's for the residents of the apartments.
What's the situation like on Sundays with the church in terms of parking in that area?
They, I mean, we met with the church, we had a a neighbor meeting, actually, at the church. They were adamant that they wanted to maintain those spaces along Luella. They actually pointed out that the toughest time, for whatever reason, to find parking was Wednesday evenings as opposed to the Sunday mornings. I don't know why, like, if they've meetings, but.
Okay. And then I have one final question is, you mentioned in your chart that you are reducing the burden by 11 spaces. And and I understand the logic there. My my thoughts on that is that currently you have retail uses that are not very demanding of parking. Would you agree with that?
It's tough to say, but let's say I do, yes.
Yeah. And and what is your, what's, who's your intended tenant for this retail space?
We haven't gotten that far. But whatever the existing tenant is, there's nothing to say that an existing tenant wouldn't move out and and a more intensive or a more intense tenant would move in in the future, right? So if retail is permitted in the building, I think you have to assume the, that the existing could also be a more high-traffic use.
Right. I just, I'm trying to make the point that, you know, I understand that this this is reducing the burden, but it's it's also, it's nuanced, is my point, is that if you're attracting a retail tenant with a very intense use, it may not be reducing the burden that much. So.
That's correct.
Okay.
From our perspective, we're we're keeping a similar amount, a little bit less retail than the existing. We're adding 15 more apartments and we're adding 28 parking spaces on site. So just the quick math, like, makes it seem like it's, the parking situation's going to get better.
Okay. No further questions.
Any other commissioner comments? The staff and.
I just, yeah, I I concur with Matt's comments in terms of, like, I think intelligent, you know, planning and development and making a bad situation worse. Because that, I mean, any improvement to that corner is an improvement. It's probably one of the worst corners in in Wayne, both from foot traffic and and parking and and so, and and also alleviating the parking, you know? And, I mean, the other thing is, I don't know, I mean, but we seem to be moving away somewhat from from, you know, people who would be attracted to those apartments might not even fill the garage. I mean, that's another thing that I think we all have to keep in mind and and use might, they might be able to turn some of those spots into at least employees of the retail or or something. So we we have to, there's nuances both ways, because if people are attracted to something where they can walk everywhere and walk the public transit, they may not have a car. So, I I mean, nuance carries both ways in this, but I I commend, you know, the idea of of trying to improve on, you know, what's there and and revitalizing it, so.
Yeah, there's certainly a school of thought here that indicates that the danger of over-parking a site is much greater than under-parking it. That being said, Commissioner Kim's comment regarding the savings, it it seems like it hinges on eliminating the restaurant use. That's, you know, that's how I read the chart, and if you had a more intensive use, the savings sort of perhaps go away. Staff, do you have any sort of view on the size of the spaces? You know, this isn't totally relevant here.
Yeah, and on further research, we agree with the applicant. It's nine by 18. It does require, then, an additional waiver during land development for more more than five contiguous spaces in a row, but it's nine by 18.
Okay, got it. All right. Well, that's not really what's in front of us tonight, but I just wanted to look further ahead. Are we ready for public comment? Let's do it. All right. Just please come up, state your name, where you live.
Hi, I'm Jose Garcia. I live at one at two Luella. I think I spoke before the meeting. Our only concern for the association of the building is the use of the alley. It's a firehouse, it's a fire lane, and we have, we hope and we assume that the project will take that into consideration. There has to be access for fire trucks. It serves more than just our building, also the building in the back, and it will serve building their building. So that's the only observation we have at this point, just to maintain the use of the alley open so that the garbage and the fire trucks don't use it as necessary, if necessary.
Okay. Would you guys like to address Mr. Garcia's comment?
I think the alley would maintain the existing use, where in some situations, it's used for loading, it's used for trash, and then when those aren't happening, it would be clear for fire access.
Any additional comment?
I'm Jean Tremblay. I own Gingy's. So I can tell you there's no parking on Sunday mornings. So, because I, you know, we're open on Sundays, and I can tell you there is no parking on Sunday.
Would you mind speaking into the microphone?
Oh, sorry. I'm really here just representing the other businesses, and this is a hardship for us. I just want you all to know that. And I don't think the communication has been terribly good. I wish it was better. I mean, I actually see what they're trying to do. It looks beautiful. Maybe it'll be a great thing, but for us today, it's not a good thing. I didn't find out about the whole project except through Savvy Main Line. I guess it would have been nice if somebody had told me about it. I was trying to be aware of when this meeting was, and I can tell you, nobody else who has the businesses knew that this was happening tonight. So I wish there was some way for us to know what's going on. I also wish that we would, you know, well, I have to plan my business out a year in advance, and it's very hard for me to go, you know, 90 days out. I'm just not quite sure what to do. You know, I don't really know what to expect. If if they could help me with that, I would appreciate it. I mean, you know, I opened up, I I moved in in January of 2020. Four days after I opened my doors, I was shut down for COVID. It's been a tough time for retail, so it'd be nice to keep that in mind.
Sure. Where is your business located?
I'm Gingy's. I'm at the corner, I'm the pink awning.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
I think it looks great. I just wish if we could work, if you could help us out somehow.
I can quickly comment on that. Absolutely, you know, our, we've, we've had communication with every every tenant in the building. We did have a neighborhood meeting. Majority of the tenants of the building did, were at that meeting. I know you guys showed up at the tail end of that meeting. We've had conversations, you know, and phone calls and whatnot. And, you know, we want full transparency with this, with this. So I, you know, would continue to work with our current residents and tenants in the building under all these terms in there as well.
So part of this process is that the applicant appears in front of us, and we're going to take a vote tonight whether, so we have three choices. We could either vote to recommend approval by the zoning hearing board, vote to stay neutral, or vote to recommend denial by the zoning hearing board. And the zoning hearing board is not bound by our decision. We're advisory only. Having said that, they do take our vote and to consideration. So you will absolutely get another pass at this at zoning if the applicant chooses to continue after tonight's vote, which is probable one way or another. Any? Please come up.
I was going to say we have nothing additional. I'm Don Tremblay. I'm Jean's husband.
Uh, microphone, please.
Is not close enough, is better?
Uh, much better, thank you.
All right, good, yeah. So I, my recommendation, you know, based on, I've been, you know, we've been, Gingy's is not my business, it's my wife's business, but I'm, you know, I'm regularly apprised of what goes on. It would be really good, and I, and I don't know if this is your purview or not, is if you could get input from the businesses about how it affects them, because they really are people who mean a lot to Wayne. The people along there are, you know, there's the eye, you know, the person has the eye business there, people count on them. There's the nail business, there's the, you know, bakery that everybody loves, and they, you know, wedding cakes and birthday cakes and graduation and all sorts of other treats. And this is really affecting all of them terribly, because they're not going to be able to move, you know, stay on there, they're going to have to move. And when they move, it's cost, you know, you know, tens, practically, you know, it could be into the six figures just to move for some of these things. So there's some transition stuff here. Now, I don't know if that's your purview to get involved in that way, or whether you consider that. I mean, for instance, you said this is a really good thing for Wayne, but, you know, as Jean said, this is really, you know, something that's going to hurt the current tenants there. And and more, they're not heard. I mean, they they literally haven't been heard, and some of them haven't even been contacted or even talked to. So and it's the fact that we're the only ones here, this, I don't know what happened to the agenda for this thing, but it wasn't even, this meeting wasn't even on the agenda as of the end of last week. It had gotten moved off. And so that was kind of odd. So nobody even knew this, none of the tenants knew that was going to happen. And there's only one person here who is a local person, and Jean and I are the only one people representing the tenants. And they haven't, there really hasn't been any kind of migration and and thought to how things could be good for the tenants. And I don't know if that's your job, though. I don't know if that's your job to actually make the, you know, you know, care about those transitions and how things work for the for the retailers and the businesses in Wayne. So that would be my only hope, if you could do, if you could do that. Because, for instance, if Jean just knew that she could have the a place for a year from now, she could plan her business for next year. The bakery could say, I could really do a wedding cake. I could have, I could actually commit to having a wedding cake for a bride in June. Right now, she can't do that because they don't know what's happening. They can't, there's no definite things. And it's, it's the same with the, you know, the the opt, the opt, obstetrician, optometrist or the eyeglass people, is that she, she can't hire an opt, another optetrician, obst, no, it's not obstetrician, optician.
Hi, doctor.
An optician, can't hire an optician because they don't know if she's going to even be there in six months. And she hasn't even been contacted. Nobody's even talked to her. So I don't know what to do about, I mean, I don't know what your, how this is, but maybe you could at least encourage good open communications, you can encourage some kind of planning to help people, and, you know, I think that would be a good thing. Does that make sense at all? I don't know.
So first of all, thank you for your comment, and let me, let me say a few words on this. Number one, the issue of things just sort of popping into our agenda a couple of days notice is something that staff and I and I dialogue about. And we do have some deadlines, obviously, because applicants want to appear in front of zoning, they have to come see us beforehand. So we'll, we want to be more transparent as as a township and as a planning commission. And we certainly want to have a little bit more advanced notice because folks want to appear in front of us and they want to give input. So that's first and foremost, to have our commitment that we can do better on that to the extent that we're allowed. With respect to whether or not this is under our purview to protect tenant businesses, you know, our review is limited to planning and zoning, but of course, we do take things like this under consideration. What we do want to do tonight is perhaps Mr. Norcini can give us a timeframe, assuming best-case scenario for the applicant, when when could the applicant possibly break ground on something like this? Mr. Norcini, could you opine on that?
Yeah, so much of that depends on the applicant and his engineer. So let's, for the sake of this argument, they go to zoning hearing board and they get the relief they're requesting, right? So then the whole, now the the land development process starts. So they're going to submit to this planning commission from, on a preliminary basis. As this commission knows, that can be one meeting, two meetings, or three meetings. Then they go to the Board of Commissioners for preliminary approval, starts back up again for final. So I, I really think, I would, I would request that the landowner reach out to these tenants to give them, and obviously, they don't know any more than we do, you know, how long this could take. It's months, right? But I don't know if it's. But I don't know if it's six months or 12 months. But I, I just ask the landowner to, not from a zoning or Saldos standpoint, but just from a, a human standpoint, to reach out to these folks that own businesses and give them some sense of, of a timeline, as best you can.
Yeah, I, I think-
You can't delay it a year, just say, you know, we don't want you to do this for a year.
No, no, Matt, that's a real question, that was a question, is that something-
Mr. Can you-
No, I'm asking him a question. Is that something that you wouldn't-
We can't do that.
We absolutely cannot do that.
Normally, I advise clients on any project that has to come to planning, at least expect a year for approvals on everything. Now, in this case, as Rob was mentioning, we were just speaking, we have planning modules also, that we have to be concerned about, because this board knows there is a big issue about planning modules in Radnor Township as it goes further downstream. So we, I, I can't guarantee anything, but I can see this breaking ground in the next year. But I don't know, Dan, if you have any-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what we've communicated, everyone through our partner, Mr. Lomburger, who I know you've spoke with several times, that we are 12-plus months away from anything happening at that site, at a minimum. We've spoken to, he has spoken to every res, every tenant in the building, just recently, as a week or two ago, with the eyeglass. And we understand the concern. We absolutely understand it's a real concern, small businesses, we understand that concern. And we'll continue to communicate. We have had the neighborhood meeting, have worked with, you know, and have had communication, we'll continue to. I mean, our intent is to have a completely transparent process here, knowing that the things are outside of control. We don't know definitive deadlines, we don't know timelines. It could take 12 months, could take 18 months, could take two years. But as I continue to say, I can assure it, nothing's happening less than 12 months.
Mr. Berger, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but would you consider, and I think that's the proper terminology, to grant one-year leases to the affected businesses, perhaps?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Would you consider giving businesses certainty in the form of maybe one-year leases, or something that says, hey, you're here for a year?
Look, in, in every situation, the lease terms are different, right? Some of the leases don't expire until then, right? So we're working with, we'll have to work with every tenant differently. And the ones that do expire, we've gone month-to-month leases with some assurance. Some of it's gonna depend on this meeting, and obviously, the next, the zoning hearing board meeting, if we even progress any further. So our feedback is, let's get through zoning first, and then knowing it's a 12-month lead time from there. But our feeling has been, it's a little premature to enter into any of those agreements, because if we, you know, if something happens at zoning and we are not granted relief, then we have other decisions to make about the future of, of what we're gonna do with this project. So until that, it's hard to make legal binding, you know, commitments.
And of course, I'm way, way out of line.
Assuming everything goes as well, obviously, we would, we would, there's not, you know, we would love to get continued rental income for the next 12 months while we go through this process.
Could, could you come up?
I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
If this doesn't go through, what's the timeframe on that? Are you talking like two months, are you talking-
Please.
Sorry.
You know, we have not, we don't know the Plan B yet, of what would happen. Our hope is this goes through, and we're hopeful of this project. We think it's, it's great for the area and great for Wayne. As we talked about, you know, at, at the neighborhood meeting, the building needs a significant deferred maintenance. And we all agree on that.
Let me tell you, I agree.
So, something needs to happen here, because there's pipe leaks throughout the building on a routine basis, and a lot of needs in that building. So, we're gonna need a substantial renovation, we're gonna need to do something to that building, as, as we all, all agree.
If I could, if I could interject-
I'm not against it.
Yeah.
I think it's important-
Can we let the solicitor speak?
I think it's important, I'm sorry, the wood's blocking me, but I think it's important to remember that what the planning commission's charge is, is to make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board on a variance request for three different variances. The discussion that you're having now about the effect of the maintenance, or whether it's going to be a renovation of this project on the tenants, is something that really needs to be held outside of this room. It isn't within the scope of, of the authority of the planning commission, no matter how much they wanna help you.
Okay.
You need, it's a private, it's a private business. And so what helps is sitting down with them and talking to them, letting them know what your concerns are, and, and asking them how they address it. This, this is not the forum.
The building owner, she's referring to.
That's correct.
The building owner. There needs to be an off, outside conversation between the tenants and the building owner, trying to come up with some type of a solution that satisfies everybody. And that's, I'm not saying it's gonna satisfy everybody.
There's nobody within the township, be it the, the commissioners, or anyone who says some, you know, thinks something like, these businesses have been there for a while, they've been important to this, to the township, and we wanna help them out in some way.
I think, I think everybody-
We have to consider that.
I think everybody on the planning commission, and on the Board of Commissioners, thinks that they wanna do everything to, they can to help businesses in the township. I don't think that's in question. But what's in question is that tonight, this is a meeting of the planning commission, it's a body that's, whose existed, just let me finish, please. Whose existence is directed by the state, and whose functions are very specifically governed by state statute. They have the power to do X, Y, and Z, but not A, B, and C. Please let me finish. So, I know you're just chomping at the jaw in here, but, but, so they can say to, to the property owner, to the applicant, please try and work with these people, please try and ease their uncertainty. But that's as far as they can go. And then what they really need to do is weigh in on the requested variances and make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board.
I understand. My question is, though, is that there, is there nobody in the township who can say, this, you know, this project should move forward because it's good for these businesses, or this, or that this is really a hardship on the businesses? And, and honestly, I think it's, it's, it's a real detriment to the community, right? If these businesses are affected, because they're really part and parcel of the community. Is there anybody in the township at all that looks into that and would make a judgment on that, and either make, you know, let the, let, let the, let the project go through, or modify the project, or, you know, try to redirect the project, or anything else?
As I said before, and I don't know how to say it a different way, I think everybody at the township is interested in helping local businesses.
Who can stop them from doing it if they feel it should be stopped, just because, to help the businesses out? You're saying the only, what I heard you say, is that has to happen between-
When they go in front of the zoning-
The businesses, and that's the only way for a communication to happen? It doesn't happen between the township and the business owners?
When, when they go in front of the zoning hearing board, their standard of review is that they're gonna have to demonstrate to the zoning hearing board that there exists on the property a hardship that's unique and peculiar to the property, and that without the relief requested, they can't make reasonable use of the property. That, that is what they need to prove to the zoning hearing board. You're asking if there's anybody at the township who can say, we're gonna stop this project because we think it could hurt other businesses? There isn't anybody. That's, that's not a state, the state does not give us that function.
You are, of course, able to bring suit and a court of law on behalf of yourself, and perhaps other businesses, but unfortunately, as our solicitor has stated, that, that this isn't the venue.
I can accept that, if that's the way it is. I just, you know, I don't think either my wife or me know exactly how this is all supposed to go. This is all new to us.
Sure, sure. And keep in mind that-
It would be helpful, though, if you could maybe facilitate some of that communication amongst the businesses, and so, try to hear from some of these, I think it would be good for you to hear from some of these businesses.
I, I think we can do better in, in communicating our hearing schedule more in advance, for sure. And we heard that loud and clear.
And my suggestion would be, when the zoning hearing board hears this case, you should get everyone who wants to have a voice at that meeting. So you know it's scheduled, right?
Yeah, they're, they're asking for significant, significant variances, and I think the zoning hearing board will, will be more than willing to hear out the affected parties.
Yeah, I don't mean to be negative. I just, I just want people to understand that this is not, like you said, it's really good for Wayne, but there are people who are being hurt. If there's any way it can be mitigated, that would be really good. And, you know, apparently, you can't do anything about it, but-
We understand.
I mean, I think that as our solicitor has stated, there's a lot of entities within Radnor that are in favor of making everything work, but there's not a lot of legally binding stuff that we can do to do what you wanna do. My one suggestion, as you're looking for entities to help you, are you members of, or have you spoken with the WBA? That's an organization that's right where you are, and that brings 20 businesses to the table to say, hey, let's talk to these developers and see what we can do. Just a suggestion, but not a-
Thank you, Commissioner Lahoda. Thank you. All right. I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of this item 158-168 Lancaster Ave. Can I get a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Nay. All right, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck at zoning.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
All right. I just wanna take a few minutes to discuss some old business. So, last time we met, which was, what, November 3rd? Not November 22nd? Oh, before we get into it. As you know, this is the year that we're going to be revising the Radnor Comprehensive Plan. It's a process that we haven't gone through for 20 or so years. The Radner, the Radnor Comp Plan is definitely in need of an update. As part of that, I was asked, and I accepted, as Planning Commission Chair, to serve on the Steering Committee for that. We are waiting for Delaware, Delaware Valley Planning to also participate. In the absence of a response, Mr. Commissioner Kim has also volunteered himself, and being the only professional planner on the planning commission, he would also stand in on the Steering Committee. So that's just news you can use. So, last time we met on November 7th, I've brought forth a proposal to discuss this scattered site ordinance to protect our historic structures in Radnor. And in furtherance of that, on November 28th, Commissioners Golis, Konda, Lahoda, and I, we attended a meeting of the Lower Marion Historical Commission, which, it, it's in charge of executing their historic preservation ordinance in that township. And keep in mind that Lower Marion is some 20 years ahead of us. We don't have a scattered site historic preservation ordinance, they have had one for 20 years. They're way ahead of the curve on us. But what was clear, I think, to all parties that attended, is that, and also from the discussion that we had on November 7th, and I don't think attending Lower Marion's Historical Commission meeting alleviated this concern necessarily, but the big elephant in the room was that if we move forward and an ordinance, a scattered site historic preservation ordinance is passed, it is going to impact individual property rights. And as such, I do anticipate that significant public participation is going to be required before we pass this ordinance. And I believe, certainly of my opinion, that if we are going to open it up for public participation, the proper venue for that is not the planning commission. The proper venue for that is probably the Board of Commissioners, for a number of reasons. As such, I want to propose a different approach in handling this ordinance. So, rather than drafting it from scratch and assembling, assembling subcommittees, my suggestion, and I just wanna get a flavor for what you guys think, is that we go through the elements of what we were given by the Board of Commissioners, and I can certainly provide an outline of those elements. We indicate what we like and what we don't like of those elements. And we pass it back to the Board of Commissioners and let the, let the parties who are interested in in passing this ordinance, I am one of those parties, as well as the Radnor Historical Commission, let them advocate with the Board of Commissioners to have hearings on it, and let the public participate. Rather than rewriting the proposed ordinance and reinventing the wheel, I think that that may be the smarter, wiser approach, to get more public participation on board. So, I wanna hear from you guys, what do you think of that? And if you agree, then I can certainly turn around within the next two weeks with the elements for you guys to consider. We can discuss them at the next meeting fairly expediently, and then pass something back to the Board of Commissioners, so that they can have a stab at it.
Sounds like a plan to me.
Anybody else?
I, I agree that the public needs to be engaged, and I, before you even said it, I said the Board of Commissioners, that's the place for that to happen. And I think that by passing it back, then anything that does happen will, you know, I mean, which is ultimately how it's gonna have to happen, is gonna be hap, is, is gonna take place by the vote of elected officials that were elected by the constituents of Radnor Township, as opposed to ourselves who maybe weren't elected. Maybe, maybe somebody said, oh, volunteer step forward, and we didn't take a step back, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I would say that having gone through, sat through three or four historical commission meetings in Lower Marion, because the entity that I, I'm volunteer at has had a historical commission issue, the tension in the room and the friction in the room was palpable, because people had gotten into a situation where they owned something historic, and it was, it was a situation where there's benign neglect going on, because they didn't have the $300,000 for the slate roof, and they didn't wanna put a slate roof on anyway. And so it's, it's the impact that, that whatever we, whatever Radnor decides to do on the, on our citizens is gonna be, it can be gigantic, and it can, and I think, so the more, the more we involve people who are gonna be affected by some changes like this, the better off we are, I think. So I, I think, and I think we all have something to bring to the table on this commission regarding that issue. So, I, I like your approach.
MJ, my recollection is that the ordinance that came to us from the BOC is not Lower Marion's ordinance.
It is not, no.
So, why, I'm still not sure why we ended up with that particular version.
So that was, so the suggested ordinance came actually from the Delaware County Planning Commission. And I think, if I recollect, it was modeled after where it was provided to Haverford Township, which is another township that has chosen to protect its historic structures. That being said, I did, I did have it reviewed by an individual who is the Lower Marion Historic Preservation Officer, Greg Pritchard. He's definitely the local authority on historic preservation. He, he's also a member of the Radnor Historical Society. He, he's also a member of the Radnor Historical Society. And he made some de minimis changes in the ordinance that sort of brought it up to 21st century standards. And I believe that we can use that ordinance, and the, the de minimis rewrite as, as a primer to, to present back to the BOC, so.
Well, as I heard you a few moments ago, you have an idea of a template that you want to run past us, and then we will, after addressing it, pass it on to BOC.
That sounds good. I, I think the right approach would be, you know, certainly, the, the document, I will definitely provide you with the updated document. But I think what's important here is that we not lock the township into any sort of language, but, you know, perhaps opine on the element of that ordinance. So for example, simplest thing is that the, the proposed ordinance contains a daily fine amount. Do we like it? Should it be more, should it be less? These are the sort of things that we could weigh in on.
One of the interesting things about Lower Marion was when they enacted in 2000, when they identified some 50 or 60, 70 properties that they deemed historically significant, with 10 different criteria of why those things were significant, they, they told folks that they could opt out of that designation. So, that, that's, that's really a significant thing. Like, there's, there's lots to churn here, in how, you know, how, how we maybe see this impact our residents. So, so anyway, yeah, I, I think that instead of getting into, instead of just trying to rewrite the thing, just, we can bring all of our own thoughts to it.
Sure, sure. And I think, you know, just gauging the pulse of this room, is that I, I think the right approach might be to allow people to opt in, rather than legislating another overlay onto residents, no matter how many. But Lower Marion didn't get there in, to the point where they are today, just by having folks volunteer, but that is a great place to start, in my, in my view.
So, because I was watching the, I was at the meeting and concerned about people's rights and, and other things, and your point about opting in, is that, I mean, is that binding, or does that change from owner to owner, once the, once the, I don't know the answer? When the property sells, does the new owner get the chance to opt in or out?
Yeah, that's a great question, I don't know.
And the other question is, if you opt in, is there, what's, what's the, what's, is there a, you know, carrot for me?
Yeah.
You know, 10% off my taxes, I don't know, give me, you know, throw something, throw me a bone.
Yeah, I, can I, like-
Please.
I've, I've drafted a number of these ordinances during the course of my career, and normally, there's no way for a second generation opt out. Once it's in, it's in, but then at least the person who buys the property has the knowledge of that when they buy it. And then, yeah, for people, to get people to opt in, you have to offer incentives. You know, a lot of times, there's density bonuses, there's expanded uses, things like that.
Yeah, I, I have to think about this one a little bit. I mean, I, I, I'm all for preserving character, but I also think that there is a housing affordability policy that we should be thinking about as well, because these types of overlays or ordinances just put undue burden on, on homeowners. I mean, I'm trying to process everything that I heard today on my first Planning Commission meeting, and I'm hearing that there is houses that are neglected, there is an independent living, or like a facility that's being proposed, and I just can't help but think that, you know, our residents are getting older, you know, fixed income, you know, it just, might be stuck in a home that they can't upgrade, and keep up to certain standards, or, you know, Department of Interior standards, or whatever it is. So, I, I don't know whether the question now is, should we put this to the Commissioners? Or is it, are we recommending that this be included into-
So, first of all, we are, as you know, an advisory body, and it has not been the habit, certainly of this Planning Commission, nor are we entitled to just proposed ordinances out of the blue, right? So this is something that came actually from the Board of Commissioners, and it was referred to us. And as, as an advisory body, we, it is, I would consider it to be our duty to review. And we can certainly say no, but that wouldn't be what we're here for, right? So, we can, we can make recommendations, and this is really what that's all about. They gave us a document. My suggestion is that we go through the elements, tell them what we like, tell them what we don't like, as far as, you know, how do you opt in, or not opt in, we can make that recommendation as well. And let the Board of Commissioners actually have hearings, public hearings on it, and let the public speak, the affected public. And I think the point of view in terms of affordability, in terms of impact on residents, that's going to get flushed out. And I feel very confident that, yeah, I'm an optimist, I feel very confident that that view will also be represented. And, but, as a planning commissioner, you will also get a chance to have first crack at it as well, to protect the interests of those residents.
MJ, I just had one question for you. You were talking about discussing elements. Is that like out of the context of an actual proposed ordinance?
So, you know, my concern is really for the language of the ordinance, because we, we're not ordinance writers. And if we take on the language itself, right, this is, it, it could really drag out the process.
All I was getting at was, we can try. I don't know if you can take elements out of the air without having an overall, you know, ordinance scheme that you're applying it to? We'll see.
If you're willing to give it a try, let's see how far we get. Any other thoughts? All right, can I get a motion adjourned? All right, second by Golis, all in favor? Good night.